Item number two, Budget 101 Workshop, presented by Robin Bertagna. Which binder should we have open? Oh, never mind, they told me CIP.
Yes, we'll start with the CIP budget. Tricia, can you please cue up our Budget 101 presentation? Yes, we have the clicker. Thank you. While she's pulling that up, I can start kind of with an overview. The first slide is an outline of the major topics that we're going to be covering tonight with finance staff reviewing this with city council. It's intended to be a very informal presentation, so please stop us. I think we've got it, Tricia. Thank you. Please stop us along the way to ask questions and keep it very informal so that we're able to provide you with information, you're able to ask us questions. Anything that isn't clear, or if we can't answer the question tonight, we'll research it and get back to you very soon with the answer. We're going to start off with the CIP budget document first. Got a couple of slides about it, and then the operating budget, and then after that, the city's cost allocation plan. So we'll walk you through each of them. The intent is to show you how the documents are put together, what's included in them, and how to find information to familiarize yourself as we get ready to head into our strategic planning session next month. The operating budget for the city, before we get into CIP, I want to explain the differences between the two. The operating budget covers from July 1st through June 30th. The appropriations laps at the end of the fiscal year end are not carried over. For the most part, there's a couple of exceptions to that that I'll cover in just a minute. With CIP budgets, they cover construction seasons. They don't necessarily lapse as of June 30th. If there's a project in process as of June 30th, those funds will be carried over to the next fiscal year so that the project may be completed. The only time that that's not the case is if the funds are deprogrammed, reprogrammed to something else, or if there's something that occurs. I've seen this through the years where the project doesn't move forward for whatever reason. So typically, those funds are unallocated and reallocated elsewhere. That said, as it relates to the operating budget, the carryover of funds is typically when we have an outstanding purchase order where we have contracted for goods or services, but we haven't actually taken delivery of them yet or paid for them. So it's an expenditure of budget funds from the prior fiscal year. We carry those over into the following fiscal year because we've made a commitment to make that purchase. The other exception is with grant funds. Grant funds often follow a federal or state fiscal year, not the city's fiscal year. So if a department receives a grant and it's intended for a purpose, for example DUI checkpoints through Office of Traffic Safety, finance goes through and reviews all of those grants at fiscal year end, determines how much money we've received for the grant, how much we've expended, and carries over any appropriations along with the revenue budget adjustment to the following year. This is a summary by funding source of the city's CIP budget. So what this shows you is we had 142.8 million in currently allocated project funding in our CIP budget last fiscal year that was adopted by city council. It's the largest we've ever had from my recollection, and of course, it's on, the major portion is under other funding sources, which is the Fifth Street Bridge that's grant-funded. So that's why it was so large last fiscal year. I'm going to show you now, if you refer to your CIP budget book, it's kind of the thin one in front of you. If you could please turn to pages 18 through 23. And we've given city council sticky posts that you can put on your budget document. If there's something that we refer to that you want to go back to later and review further, and highlighter pens so you can leave notes for yourself, what have you. So this highest level summary of the CIP budgets is in the summaries section in the far back. It's pages 87 through 93, excuse me, through 95. And that's the summary that you see up there. We pulled from the totals that are on each of these pages back here. And they're segregated by funding source, whether it's the general fund, the Transportation Development Act Fund, Streets and Roads, Development Impact Fees, CDBG, Water, Wastewater, State Revolving Loan Funds, or Other, which is typically grant funding, or bonds that we've sold, where we have bond proceeds to do a project. Each project within the city is listed on these summary schedules. I wanted to draw your attention to that first. And then go back to each section of the CIP budget. We have the tabs down the side, General, Facilities, Community Services, Public Safety, Streets, Water, Wastewater. They're broken out by the type of project that's being funded for each of the particular CIP projects. It starts on page three. And there's a summary in front of each section that shows what the general projects are, what the facilities projects are, et cetera. Behind each summary is a detailed listing of the project, what's being done, et cetera. So let's take a look at facilities, for example. If you turn to page seven of the CIP budget, that's a summary of all the facility-related projects that were included in last year's CIP budget on page seven. You flip to the next page, page eight, shows you what's included within those particular individual projects and how they're being funded, what type of funding sources. We also typically include an annual impact on the operating budget at the bottom there. If we anticipate that it's going to increase operating budget costs, we ask the department to estimate that and provide us with that to include, so that if city councils reviewing this as part of the budget process, they know if there's going to be an ongoing impact for cleaning, maintenance, et cetera, of whatever we're doing. The other thing that's very distinct relating to CIP is that it's typically used for building something, whether it's an infrastructure item, streets, roads, water, infrastructure, sewer underground. We typically take those projects, capitalize them at the end of the fiscal year, and depreciate them over the useful life of the particular asset. Another example I made note of, I want to refer you to. Each section, for example, page 21, has a summary of the public safety projects. And behind that page is all the related public safety projects that are included on the summary. Each section of the CIP budget is set up like this.
So it looks to me, if I'm reading this correctly, following your discussion, this is a project for City Hall improvements, and currently it's funded, the source of funding's the general fund?
That's correct.
And with a little bit of money from CDBG?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at some of these projects, and obviously I haven't looked at all of them, but if we wanted to redirect funds, we can do that?
Yes.
Thanks.
And for clarification, I think when you were looking at the CDBG funding, it's under the column Previous Expenditures. We track how much money we've spent on, in prior years for the same projects. So that's not a currently funded. Right now, the current funding that's allocated to that is all general fund. You're welcome.
That's the 22,000?
Yes. And that was, that was what was allocated before last year, and then we added another 68,000 in fiscal year 1819. In the current fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
As part of the budget adoption.
To follow up on what Councilman Boomgar said, with the CIP funding, is the, because it's general fund, is this allowable to be then transferred to operational funds?
It could be yes. That's at council's discretion.
Okay, thank you.
And what I would ask is, as part of the budget process, as we start kicking off and getting into the budget process, if council has a desire to reallocate funding from existing projects, check in with finance so we can tell you how much of that might already be spent and how much is left over that is currently still available. Give council more information as to what distinguishes a CIP budget item versus an operating budget item. We have certain criteria that tells us in finance how we're going to track it and account for it, and where it belongs as part of the budget process. In order to be a capital CIP project, it has to qualify according to the city's capital asset policy, which means it's going to cost in excess of $50,000, have a useful life greater than two years, and the cost of construction, as I mentioned, is capitalized and depreciated over the useful life. For example, if we do roadway rehab, that's typically a 30-year useful life. Curb, gutter, sidewalk is often anywhere from 30 to 50, depending upon where it's at, but they have much longer useful lives than equipment and vehicle items that we use for other things. Excuse me, I also included out of the city's capital asset policy what the definition of infrastructure is on this slide, just so you can see. It's typically things that include pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, anything associated with roadways, bridges, sewer systems, water distribution systems, and water drainage systems.
All right, Rob. Just for a point of clarification, say we have a curb or gutter or street, and you say it's depreciated over the lifespan, which is 30 years? How does that concept translate to something in writing here? Where's that reflected?
As far as the budget itself?
Right.
Once it's set up in the budget and it's expended, finance goes through all of the city's CIP projects at the end of every fiscal year, and we look at whether they're complete or not. Typically, it's, there's a notice of completion filed. We get the date that it was completed, and then we turn around and aggregate all the costs, set it up in the city's fixed asset module, and depreciate it over the useful life based upon information that was put together by Public Works and Finance years ago as to how long things lie, last, what the useful life is.
All right, so by depreciating it over the useful life, how, what does that exactly mean?
Well, you only see, you don't see depreciation on the city's fixed assets. It shows up in our comprehensive annual financial report, and we do include it as a footnote in the budget for water and wastewater, but not for other funds, not for general city fixed assets.
All right. Thank you.
Can you explain a little further why it's only done with water and wastewater?
Because they're enterprise funds, and I'm going to go over the definition of what an enterprise fund is when we get to the operating budget, so I will cover that. Thank you. Unless there's more questions on the CIP budget, I'm ready to move on to the operating budget.
Page, page 10. So if something's in parentheses, that means that there was an expenditure during this year? This is on the railroad right-of-way?
No, that means it was unfunded and reallocated elsewhere. So we were showing there that there was current funding in the prior year, and for fiscal year 1819, it was unfunded and reprioritized elsewhere.
Okay. Is there notes as to where it was reprioritized at all, or is that something we can ask you?
Yeah, you, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
My immediate reaction was it was reprioritized to higher-level projects last year so that we could fund what was requested by departments. There's a very limited amount of general fund dollars available. We got down to where there was only a half million left last year, and the city manager and I had a discussion. I recommended that he not go lower than a half million dollars because it would leave us in a position where it would be difficult to take, to take care of a leaky roof or anything major that happened throughout the city. Since then, we've gotten some additional funds, and as we get more into the budget process, finance will quantify that and determine how much we have available in general fund dollars. But they were reallocated because there's a lot more need than what there is dollars available, frankly.
Who has the authority to transfer that out, say, in the middle of the budget year? Would that have to come to council? Is there a limit for the city manager, or?
It would have to come to council as part of the city's budget policy. It states that the city manager has the ability to move money in between CIP projects up until their purchasing authority of 50,000.
50,000, okay.
But I can tell you that we've done little transfers where a CIP project was done, and it was over budget by $3,500, and we've moved money to cover the negative and zero all the project and be done with it, but that's been years ago since I've seen anything like that. It just doesn't happen.
Thanks.
Robin? Hi. Could you explain the forecasting you have going into future years? Because just looking, starting at page eight, starting at page nine, for, I'm just using this as a random example. We've got City Hall improvements, and it's just set at the 50,000 every year going forward because that's the base for the CIP. And then we flip the page and we get into improvements to buildings, and it's 200. When do you go through the process to readjust these numbers? How is those projects weighted? And, because I know you're forecasting down the line, and can you explain this for everyone in the room, how you're coming up with these down the line? Because these are just guidelines and they're not firm. We can, that's why we're starting this process now. So can you explain that to everyone?
Yeah, they're very minimal, based upon needs throughout the city. There's a lot of general fund facilities, and this is the minimum that we've set up as being needed on an annual basis, based upon historical records and the requests of the departments. In all honesty, I think we'd have a lot more requests if we had dollars available. So this is what we have in here, and it's the minimum in order to keep facilities going so there's not deterioration. There's a lot of competing priorities, though, as I'm sure you're all aware.
Robin, I have a question on the minimum for the 50,000 transfer. Is that by project index, or is it by fund?
It's by project. And I, let me find the section in our operating budget that refers to that. So I can refer you to where that is in writing. Yeah. Give me just a second, and I think this will be helpful and informative for you. All right, well, I don't want to hold everybody up. I'm going to come back to that because I will find that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Just a quick question, Robin. On a lot of these, kind of piggyback on what Mark said, we have previous expenditures on all of these projects, so that money is spent and gone.
It is, correct.
So under current funding, that may be some where we can kind of adjust if the need comes up.
Yes, that's correct.
However, we do run the risk that we can, we won't leave something halfway finished.
Right.
All right. So that's a case-by-case basis. If times get tough, we just ask, can we find out where we can kind of move?
Finance uses spreadsheets to track this, and Lynn and Probline update those, I would say at least quarterly, certain times a year as we head into budget. It's monthly, so we can look at any CIP project and see how much was allocated, how much has been spent to date, or is encumbered, and what the remaining balance is.
All right. And do we have some projects that have not, that are on this list that perhaps we haven't started yet, but we're kind of saving up for, if you will?
I'm sure that's the case with some of them, yes.
All right, very good. That would be a lot cleaner to maybe reallocate if we have to. Thank you.
Spencer found the section I was looking for and didn't want to make you wait while I looked for it. On page 45 of the operating budget, so I'm switching documents on you. I apologize for that, but that's where this is at. It is unless you have more questions on CIP, in which case we can switch back. I know it's a lot of documents, but it's important to understand what's included in them. So on page 45, the budget policy, the column on the right-hand side specifically says, "Specific levels of budgetary authority will be maintained." And it says, "Item 2, the city manager will have the authority to transfer up to $50,000 in appropriations between capital projects and between funds for capital projects in order to meet the policy intent of city council." So that's the basis, which if a CIP project was over expended, in the example I used, $3,500, we move money from one project to another and close things out. But I've never seen the city manager move $50,000 in appropriations from one to another without coming to city council. That just doesn't happen.
So that makes me think that it, it could be just by fund, not by project index.
Well, it could be, but we keep each fund separate.
Correct.
I'm getting ready to cover that next.
Right, am I getting ahead a little here?
You are a little bit, that's all right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Really trying to understand the policies to make sure how we, we do this. Okay, thank you. You're doing really well by navigating through all these binders, thank you.
Thank you. My next thing will be to explain the operating budget and all the different types of accounting funds, but since I already steered you to page 45, you might want to put a post-it on 43, which goes over the city's financial policies, 45, which is the budget policies, and 46. Those are some key areas that are really important. They highlight what we do and the authority that's been delegated from city council to the finance department and the rules that we follow. If you think of anything on the CIP budget and you want to back up and discuss that further, of course, just let us know, and we'll be happy to address that as well. Some of the handouts, before I get into the operating budget, I did want to mention, included in the budget documents before you tonight, we did give you some additional handouts in your binders, including the summary of the city's operating budget, shows that for fiscal year 1819, the operating budget totals 119 million. That's a pie chart that looks something like this. Behind me. Just in case anyone wanted to see it, it's in our budget document. It's available online for members of the public that might want to see it. And with that, let me get into the operating budget. As I mentioned, the operating budget is made up of a variety of different types of accounting funds. I do want to go through these with you because it's very important to understand that there's different pots of money that are segregated and used for specific different purposes throughout the city in accordance with the accounting standards that were required to follow. Each fund is set up to have a distinct three-digit number. The general fund starts off with 100, and that's for the general operations of the city, and includes all of the individual operations within City Hall, police, fire, development services, community services, parks and recreation, and administration. So in order to better understand how our budget document is put together, please take a look, the general fund revenues are included on pages 94 through 96 in the revenue section of the operating budget. There's an expenditure summary for the general fund on pages 66 and 67. It shows a summary by department. And has each division within the city's general fund shown on that summary on pages 66 and 67. The revenues are included in one section of the budget, and the summary expenditures in another. Then the details for each and every department are in a separate tab within the budget document itself. So the expenditures are by department and division on pages 105 through 240. It's very voluminous, lots of pages because there's a lot of data there. For the general fund, for example, property taxes and sales tax are two largest revenue sources, and together they represent 60% of our budget. Police and fire represent our largest departments, and they are about 60% as well, as far as our percentage of our expenditures.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Yeah. 60% of our revenue for the general fund are sales tax and property tax. I know the article came out in the newspaper about sales tax being 13 million for Yuba City. It's a very large number in comparison to some of our neighboring agencies, but we're the regional hub. We have the box stores, the auto dealerships, et cetera, and 60% of the general fund revenues are, are sales tax and property tax. 60% of our general fund expenditures, on average, are police and fire, public safety.
For clarification, we might got that a lot of money in sales tax, but the city doesn't see, but as percentage of that?
That 13 million is how much the city receives.
That's our percentage?
Yes, that is, that's our 1%.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
Is the 60% for expenditures for police and fire, is that kind of like the average within other comparable cities, or is that, do you, do you know that information?
It varies depending upon the city and other revenue sources they have, what other services they provide. We're not unique, it's not unusual. We have looked at that and compared ourselves. We're right in there, I would say. Maybe a little on the lower side, sometimes it's 63, 64%. Some cities contract for police and fire services, and then the percentage is, is less. It's, each agency is very unique in the services that they provide, how they provide them, whether they do it with employees or contract services.
Robin, along those same lines, what cities have we compared our public safety to? Because I do know that other agencies or other municipalities, they're upwards of 70%. And I know there's a lot of variables in there, but what have we looked at in comparison? And as you said, we are on the lower-end side with our public safety. So where, where have we done the comparison and, and to come up with the 60 to 62% versus 70%?
We've compared ourselves with the comparator agencies that the city has used in the past for salary comparisons such as Chico, Woodland, Rockland, Turlock, Lodi, West Sacramento. We've also looked at, frankly, what revenue sources they have that we don't have. Every single one of the agents- Every single one of the agencies I just mentioned has a revenue source in some fashion we don't have.
And, sorry, may I continue? And that's why I asked that, because some of the cities that we use as our sample are truly, in my opinion, not comparison because we do not have the gross revenue that a Sacramento does, or possibly a West Sacramento. We're more comparable with maybe a Chico or something of that line versus, you know, some of the cities that we've chosen for comparison. And um, do you know what, what I would consider a true um representation of a comparative city? Are they running closer to sixty percent or closer to seventy percent? And I know I've got you on the spot, but do you know offhand?
I don't remember, for example, Chico, what their percentage was. We can certainly, I know I had that at, at a point probably six months ago when I was looking at it. I do know, and I'm gonna throw out a number. I may not be exact, but I'm pretty close, I think. Chico has six point six million of utility users tax. We don't have.
Right.
So I think uh their percentage of public safety might be a little higher, but I don't know.
Okay.
We can certainly take a look at that, though.
Thank you.
I would certainly defer to staff on this, but I know another comparable that is worth looking at is the per capita expense for the public safety, not just the budget outlay. And then you have to make sure that it's, you know, as apples to apples as possible.
We did look at that, and I think that um that will be something that'll be included in our presentation coming to council on March twelfth as part of the budget workshop. It is on a per capita basis, and I agree that that's very informative.
Just, just to be on the safe side, that we all know where per capita means. Just in case, what is per capita?
Uh, we take the total expenditures, for example, for police and/or fire and divide it by the population to see how much we're spending dollars per person in the community.
Okay, so that could be sixty-five thousand people, or is it whatever the new, the most present?
Yeah, whatever the population is. So for us, sixty-eight thousand and change versus Chico has some eighty thousand people. That way it, it gets it down on a level playing field since they're a larger agency than we are.
Yet, you're using the total fund reven, whatever that revenue amount is, right? Or is it the specific allocation for that, for police and fire?
Yes, the specific budget allocation for that item that we're measuring, so police and/or fire.
And yet, their budget could be greater and still divided by a larger number because of the size of the population.
Correct.
That would still kind of have a, a little bit of off balance of the cost, wouldn't it, or just?
It could, and you also have to factor in, in Yuba City's case, for example, that the fire department provides a larger population area than just the community itself.
The, within the county as well.
Right, so that's why looking at a per capita basis, based upon population served, will give you a pretty good indicator of comparability.
Then do we look at total staff by the cities of, of comparison? So would we say, just as an example, you know, fire, we have five and they have ten. So does then that change that number? Again, obviously the...
Probably the total budget allocation is a better indicator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we obviously like to compare salaries as well to make sure we're in the ballpark, so to speak, and not totally out of alignment.
Right, so there's a lot more than just a per capita comparison because you could also be looking at number of staff, their region of service, and the qualifications of the staff, and so now we're getting deeper into...
You can measure just about anything, yes, you're correct.
So just, just making a comment.
I think probably perhaps those questions right there would be um something at the department head level. If they go to justify staffing and whatnot, they'll compare different cities in order to justify positions and whatnot. So that's probably good, I, I, information for them as well.
Right, no, I'm just, I, I agree with you, Mayor. I, I'm just making the clarity of it to, the staff is already probably has that information, so they're probably pulling it out some, you know, for us in the future for the March twelfth, probably.
We have some of it already, yes, absolutely.
I'm just asking to clarify. Thank you.
Sure. Lynn was pointing out to me that on a per capita basis, if you turn to page fifty-eight, we do have the budget broken down, uh the general fund used by department as far as, for example, thirty-five percent of the general fund budget is for police. And it shows on a per capita basis how much is expended for each department.
Thank you, Lynn.
So I mentioned that the detailed expenditures by department are included in all the tabs as part of the budget. For example, you've got finance, IT, human resources, development services, police, fire, public works, community services, so on and so forth. Included in each department's budget section, uh there's a department summary, a personnel summary of all the authorized positions for that particular department. The department's mission statement, a description of the service provided, the strategic issues, and I'm gonna show you an example of that in a minute. Um, if you jump ahead, uh you can look at the police department's budget on page one sixty-two, and I'll walk you through the items that are included there. So on one sixty-two, for example, it shows you that the total police department adopted budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen before any amendments was fourteen point seven million. Looking at page one sixty-three, it shows the personnel summary for every position allocated within the department, what division it's allocated to, and what the positions are, along with the two previous year adopted budgets. So you can compare from year to year what changes, if any, have occurred within the departmental budget. Turning to page one sixty-four, it includes the department's mission statement, service description, strategic issues, and accomplishments from fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Page one sixty-five includes their eighteen nineteen initiatives. And page one sixty-six includes their performance measures, where they're tracking uh their efficiency in a variety of categories. Each department has different ones that they use. And we look at them on a year-to-year basis to see what the changes are. Each individual department summary, the budget sections are all set up very similar to the police departments. And everything that you see in those individual summaries rolls forward in total to the department summaries in the very front of the budget in the section labeled summaries. So the budget layout is very, very similar for each and every department. Next, I wanted to talk about special revenue funds.
So I know from history that uh a lot of times positions are allocated or identified within the budget, but they're never filled for whatever reason. And I know, for instance, in public works, you can't get certain, just because the market isn't there. When we go into the budget workshop, it would be helpful to understand how many positions are actually within the budget, but we're unable to fill for whatever reason. If we can have that information, that would be great.
I can give you a list of current vacancies, but I can tell you that they're all in the process of being recruited. Back, way back when, we used to have...
Why are you pointing at me?
Sorry. Way back when, we had positions in the budget that were unfunded, but they were still listed as positions that we knew we weren't gonna fill for whatever reason. We took all those out years ago, and the reason we did that is as we try to compare ourselves to other agencies, you can't compare, I'll just take the finance department, for example. If we have positions in there that we're not filling, it looks like we're not as efficient because we don't have the staff. So we um went through probably five years ago, six years ago, and took them all out.
Perfect. You knew, you knew where I was headed then?
I did. But we do still have the list of vacancies. I track those um quarterly. Uh, staff puts together a list for me, and we're able to identify what potential savings we might have for fiscal year end that we can then program potentially into CIP budget for the following year. The vacancies, as you're aware, probably don't save a hundred percent of the budgeted amount in public safety because you're still covering the shift. So a lot of times there's overtime in place of the salary and benefits you're saving for the position you don't have hired. But we look at those quarterly and we track them and look at the trends and whether we're higher or lower than what we were previously. Right now, we're down to what I would consider the lowest I've seen in years as far as vacancy savings because we're, we're staffing and we're filling positions. HR's been hiring and recruiting and um, it's very low in comparison to what it's been in previous years and at different times of the year.
Piggybacking off of that, um, when it comes to especially public safety, and I know that, you know, we've almost got all the positions budgeted for there, um, we end up spending more money on the long haul by paying all the excess of overtime. So if we started allocating more towards those positions, get those positions truly filled, cut down on the overtime, we could actually do a better service for the city and get the proper personnel out on the streets protecting the city. So I wanted to piggyback on that, and Councilman Boom Garden, you can chime in on that one if you agree or disagree, since you used to serve in that capacity. But from a management standpoint, it makes sense to pay regular time versus massive amounts of overtime and save the benefits. And then I have a, one more area, but go ahead.
Since you put me on the spot, uh, and, and obviously I think Natalie or Robin or anybody else on staff, the benefit load factors into that. So there's kind of a sweet spot between what the, uh, what the total compensation is for a person's um versus the time and a half for the overtime. But there's also the factor of overworking people and burning them out as well, so.
Exactly, and as we go through the budget, could we take a look at that with the departments as far as where that sweet spot is? With tasking them with too much overtime uh to where, you know, we're potentially saving money, but actually we're burning them out uh because they cannot do their, their job effectively being burned out. I want to shift gears, and I, I see a trend, and, and I start with the administrative level. And I see a trend in all the positions. We'll, I mean, we'll take one nineteen just an example, but I see it across all of these. Your city administration level is really, you know, the, they're considered professionals because of the job they're in. But I say, I see a constant theme, and I'll use city manager. Uh, expense six twenty-seven, professional services. Why are we budgeting fifty thousand under professional services for the city manager? And then we can continue on with uh every, just about every classification has professional services. Are we subbing work out that should be done by those executive positions, or what is this? Because this is just a category.
Great question. Can I defer to a little bit later in our presentation because I'm gonna cover that?
I would, I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Robin, uh, just for clarity, in case I missed it. So on the presentation on March um twelfth, you're gonna go through the whole vacancies, so where they're at and how they've been filled. Is it just?
We can provide that before March twelfth, that's...
Just to be, um, understand where the, where that's at. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I think it was last updated about three weeks ago, so we'll get that to you. There's historical data too, that we can provide you that'll show you kind of the trend over time. I think it's interesting to see how previously we've had as high as like four point two million in vacancies and now it's down to one point something million. It's down significantly compared to where it was, which is a good thing. That means we're providing services, which is why we're here. You're welcome. Going back to this, um, special revenue funds, they're restricted in nature by whomever's giving the city the funds typically. I know it, um, it's separate, I look at it as separate buckets of money. And then anything that starts off uh with a fund number of two hundred is a special revenue fund, meaning it's restricted by somebody for some special purposes, whether it's the Transportation Development Act funds, streets and road monies that can only be used for streets and road purposes. Grant funds that the city receives, gas tax monies, et cetera, those all go into our special revenue funds. And for special revenue funds, the details are of the revenues that are coming into the city are on pages ninety-eight and ninety-nine, which is in that revenue section um that I referred to you previously as it relates to the general fund as well. All the city's revenues are in the revenue section of the budget document. And then for special revenue funds, the expenditure details are in the tab uh special revenue, which is on pages two seventy through two eighty-four. And then I'm briefly gonna touch on CIP funds. Uh, I talked about the CIP budget first before we got into the operating budget. Uh, CIP funds typically are part of the three hundred series of funds. And I say typically because we have a separate CIP fund for every funding source, whether it's general fund, development impact fees, um, anything that we maintain a separate accounting for has its own fund number. With the exception of water and wastewater, they have their own fund numbers, but they're within the enterprise series of funds, which is the five hundred series. I'll show you that in a minute. We have a CIP fund for water. It's fund number five seventeen. And for wastewater, it's fund five twenty-eight. Debt service funds are always the four hundred series of funds. Finance sets up a debt service fund to merely pay principal and interest on outstanding debt. We don't include that in the budget document per se because it's assumed that city council is authorizing appropriations to pay interest and principal on all outstanding debt at the time they agree to enter into the debt, whether it's a bond financing, a lease agreement, or any type of long-term debt. That said, we do have a detailed description on pages seventy-two and seventy-three of the budget document that talks about the city's debt that's been issued in the past. There's a brief description uh uh that also includes any refinancings and what the funds were used for. The purpose of why the debt was incurred. And then there's a summary that shows you on pages seventy-five and seventy-six. If you flip to those pages of the budget document. Page seventy-five shows you when the debt was originally issued, how much was originally owed on it, when the final payment date is, the average interest rate, the balance outstanding as of the beginning of the fiscal year in the budget document, and then the interest and principal pa- payable that particular year and the total. The next page, page seventy-six shows you five years of future debt payments to get a feel for what the obligation is in both interest and principal on an annual basis on a go-forward to look five years into the future.
Robin.
Yes.
Um, you and I know these terminologies very well, but, and we've had this conversation. Most of what we issue is GO or general obligation bonds, very few rev bonds. Uh, can you explain for everyone here the difference between the two and why we do that, so we can get a better understanding of the debt?
General obligation bonds are typically a, a general obligation of the city and are typically general fund obligations. We don't issue general fund debt for the most part because repaying it and paying the interest rate on it just inflates, inflates the cost of what you're trying to do. We've ta- typically tried to save in advance to do general fund projects throughout the city. There's been some exceptions to that. For example, fire station number four, when we constructed it, we did a lease obligation. It was a ten-year lease where that's a general obligation of the city versus a revenue bond for water and wastewater where that is repaid. Typically, it's done to do improvements to the plant or infrastructure in the ground, and that's repaid, repaid with user charges to the customers that benefit from the project that was constructed. So we don't have a separate debt service section in the budget because, as I mentioned... because as I mentioned, councils agreeing to appropriate funds at the time that the debt is originally issued. Next, I'd like to discuss.
Robin, I have a question. On the streetlight conversion loan? Because you made the comment that. And just try and understand a little bit more here. So, please bear with me.
That's all right.
That the other loans are then somehow repaid through some sort of fee for service kind?
If it's water and wastewater related, yes, that is correct.
But, not this particular loan or?
In the case of the streetlights.
Yeah.
The intent there was the cost of the project was going to be covered. Converting them to LED lights was going to be covered through energy efficiency savings.
Yeah.
So, that, that particular item is included in the budget in the streets division portion of Public Works' budget, the interest and principal payments on that.
So, we pay for it how? Besides the loan and the revenue?
Well, we had, we reduced at the time we entered into that conversion. We did a lease through PG&E or through Optera. I'm sorry. It was Optera if I remember correctly. To do the LED retrofitting, paid for it with the lease proceeds and then lowered the energy bill that we typically had to pay for. And now instead, we pay interest and principal. The payoff was there to repay for the cost of the project.
Got it. Okay.
Over a long-term basis.
I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to discuss enterprise funds. Those are also a very distinct and different type of accounting that we use. And the reason we use them for, as an enterprise fund is the cost of service is supposed to, you're supposed to charge revenues to cover the cost of service sufficient to have adequate reserves, but not excessive reserves. Do your operation and maintenance costs, your staff costs, any debt service that you're required to pay for projects that you've done in the past and any infrastructure renewal and replacement that's necessary, any expansion of plant or underground facilities as well. There is no profit motive in a government agency that provides the service. You're merely trying to recover your costs to provide the service to the citizens. And UVA City uses this for both our water and our wastewater operations. Other cities that I've seen, when I used to do audits, had sometimes enterprise funds for every, for other things, including airports, golf, golf courses, theaters. It can be used for anything that you just want to recover your costs and not make a profit. So, for enterprise utility, the detailed revenues are on page ninety-seven, which is included again in the revenue section of the budget. The expenditure summary is on page sixty-eight and page two forty-two. And all the details of the expenditures are in the utilities section of the budget on pages two forty-five through two sixty-seven. Moving on to internal service funds. We use those to capture revenues. Too far. Yeah. There you go. We use those to capture revenues from departments that are using services throughout the city. Examples that we use this for are the city's health insurance, disability insurance, workers' compensation, liability, in addition to technology replacement and vehicle replacement. And the way that these are set up is each department, we aggregate costs and evaluate what the cost of service is and then charge the departments who are using the service. This information is included in your budget document. Page one hundred has the revenue summary. The expenditures are included in the internal service tab. Internal service fund tab. We refer to those as ISF funds. The expenditure summary is on page sixty-eight and page two eighty-five. And then the details are in that section on pages two eighty-six through two ninety-three. So, as I mentioned, we accumulate the cost for services in a separate internal service fund. And then we charge the user departments based upon the share of costs that they're actually using on some rational and reasonable basis. Next, the revenues are received back into the ISF fund to cover the cost. And I'll give you an example. The city's general liability fund is shown on page one hundred. We expect to receive eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of revenue from the general liability fund for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And the expenditures for the general liability fund are on page two eighty-nine. They total eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. So, finance goes through and allocates the cost of the citywide liability insurance and property insurance. That's included as part of that budget unit, unit as well. On a citywide basis, on a ruling five-year historical cost, we look at the claims loss data as far as who's filing liability claims against the city, what department it relates to, whether it's streets, police, et cetera. And then we also allocate based upon the payroll dollars for an exposure. We receive the formula from NCCSIF years ago for how they develop our deposit that we have to put in for our self-insurance fund for liability. And we allocate the costs in a mirror fashion to how they charge us. So, each department gets an allocation of that cost. For property insurance, the property insurance premium is allocated based upon the insured values of all the city facilities and it's just a pro-rata portion of the premium for the year. Finance pretty much has a spreadsheet for almost anything. If you're ever interested and really bored, please come by. We're happy to share them with you. We go through and update them annually so that we're assured that we're providing an accurate cost estimate to all of the departments. Page seventy of the operating budget has a summary of all the ISF charges by fund. So, it doesn't break it down by department. So, you can't see for the general fund share how much police is paying, how much fire is paying, et cetera. But, it does do it by fund. And then separately, each department has a line item for most of the internal service fund charges. That's page seventy. Shows you the summary. By fund, how much water and wastewater are paying, how much the general fund is paying, et cetera, for the various types of internal service funds we have throughout the city. And then to show you how it shows up, for example, in a department budget, if you flipped page one sixty-seven, that's part of the police department budget. You can see the line item there for insurance. It shows on the far left-hand side, line six four three, insurance. That's the allocation for liability and property insurance for the year.
That's not from the internal, is it from the internal service charge summary that you referenced?
That's the police department's share of the general fund charge. So, the general fund charge.
Okay. So, it's a portion. Got it. Okay.
For liability is six hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three.
Mm-hmm.
That's the portion that's being allocated to the police department.
The overall.
Based upon a very lengthy spreadsheet.
Yes, I can see that.
The nice thing about spreadsheets is once you have them set up, you plug in the new claims data every year, the new payroll data, and it spits out based upon the allocation formula.
I think I'm keeping up a little bit.
Let me know if you'd like me to slow down. I don't want anyone to go to sleep. And moving on to trust and agency funds.
Hold a minute for a second.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming, so correct me, on internal service funds, it shows full-time equivalent positions of four. Are those basically funding positions within, within your department or, or where?
Let me turn you to another page. Hopefully, it's there. It's not there. It's in the summary. It's for fleet maintenance. But, let me show you where you can see that. If you look at page two ninety-one, the only salaries and benefits that you're going to see in the internal service funds are in vehicle maintenance. It's for our fleet shop. And I'll show you where you can see the detailed positions. Page seventy-eight is a summary of all the city's full-time equivalent positions by division and department. And it shows you there that vehicle maintenance has four. Lynn just pointed out, it's also on page one ninety-nine, the public works summary section since it's under the public works department. As part of the city's organization chart. But, yes, we have no, the, the internal service funds, with the exception of fleet, does not have any staff. Good question.
I know we're going to talk about how other positions are funded. So, I wondered if that was just one of them.
Trust and agency funds is the, kind of the last category of accounting, different buckets of money that we track. And the best way to describe that is other people's money. It's not our, they're not our funds. We're, we have a fiduciary relationship with these other agencies, whether it's NET-5, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, Sutter Animal Services Authority, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, LAFCO. We track these accounts separate on the city's ledger so they don't get commingled with the city's funds. Each accounting fund that we use is a separate self-balancing set of accounts. We only transfer money in between them if we have a specific reason to. That said, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency and the successor agency reimburse the city for the cost of these services as calculated as part, part of the city's cost allocation plan. Sasa allocates a flat percent of net operating cost based upon a predetermined, already agreed to formula as part of the JPA agreement. And the level of activity for NET-5 and LAFCO are minimal, so the city doesn't allocate any cost to them. Now, I think the part that you're probably most interested in is getting to the discretionary budget options. City council has the ultimate discretion to reallocate and allocate and prioritize where the city's dollars are to be spent. So, obviously, you have the most ultimate discretion as to how we're going to proceed from a budgetary perspective and allocating resources. But, I wanted you to have a list of all the city's authorized positions. When we talk about discretion of the council, priorities can be shifted between departments from eliminating positions over here to adding positions over there. So, I've provided you tonight with a detailed list in your operating budget binder of all city positions. It's an eight-page list. What it looks like. Right behind your pie charts. It looks kind of like this. And it's listed by department and by division. It doesn't have anybody's names, but it shows on a position-by-position basis the title, the position that was authorized, and what is included in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen operating budget for the salary and benefits cost for that position. So, as you get ready to weigh options in the budget and potentially look at reprioritizing things, you need to know what we're currently paying for certain positions if you want to look at reallocating dollars elsewhere. I'm sure you may have questions on that after you've had a chance to review and digest it. That's something for you to take with you and call me or the department head related to the item that you have a question on and we'll provide as much information as we can. And just so that you're fully informed, what the total cost that's shown here includes, it's all salary, all benefits, including the CalPERS load for that particular position. And it does vary depending upon what tier of CalPERS a person is participating in, whether they're a classic employee that has been here for a long time, whether they're part of the Pepper Reform Legislation and have a lower-tier benefits, et cetera. We budget based upon the exact cost for a position. We look at the exact cost of the salary and factor in if somebody's at step three for twenty pay periods and step four for the remaining portion of the year, then we increment the following year. And we send that out to all the department heads to review to tell us if we've got anything wrong as part of the budget preparation process. But, we don't, hate to even say this because it sounds horrible. We don't pad the budget. These are all actual direct costs based upon each and every position within the city. We look at the healthcare that an employee is at. We budget for their healthcare cost, whether it's employee, employee plus one, family plan, or opt-out-of-coverage cost. It includes the cost of workers' compensation based upon the category of the employee, et cetera. So, this should be useful for city council and prioritizing where we're at and where city council wants to go. Another area of council discretion is in operation and maintenance expenses. So, what I provided you with here for information so that you could review and see if you want to discuss further is a summary of the city's general fund expenditures by category. That's included in the front section of your operating budget binder as well. And it looks kind of like this in case you want to go through and question any line items. We will get to professional services in just a minute. But, operation and maintenance costs, if you were to flip to page four of this, there's a variety of different categories of O and M. I mentioned that this because as I look at areas where council can have discretion, you could direct city staff to defer maintenance on some things. I would caution you that we would need to talk to the department that's related to the expenditure to determine if it's going to increase costs further by delaying something and cause things to break down and deteriorate even further. But, that said, there is on page four, various categories of equipment, operation, and maintenance. Special equipment, operation, and maintenance. Vehicle and special equipment ISF. When you look at that one, it looks like it's huge and it is a big number, one point six million. But, of that, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand is the ISF charge coming through from fleet, from the fleet maintenance staff and operation for running their facility. Three hundred thousand is vehicle fuel and eight hundred thousand is the vehicle replacement plan charge for replacing the city's fleet. So, it sounds like a really big number, but when you break it down to the individual components, it's not nearly as big of a number as you might think. And then for buildings and facilities, O and M, on a citywide basis, last fiscal year was six hundred and ninety-five thousand. So, again, this is something you can review and follow up with me or any other department heads that it's related to their, their budget unit and ask questions as, as you see fit.
Robin, specifically on page one, going over all the salaries and such, can you explain the extra help? Year-to-date, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand. You know, it's not part of the normal salaries. It's not part of the overtime. What are we putting in extra help and why?
Each department typically has something different there. I'll speak to finance, for example. Finance and IT. Finance, we have a small amount for hiring extra help during the summertime when people are out on vacations to have coverage at the front counter so that we don't end up making people stand in long lines or drop. so that we don't end up making people stand in long lines or dropping calls. Um, it's just a busy time of year. For customers, when, um, they're using more during the summertime, we're getting more phone calls. So we have a little bit of extra help money in our budget. I'd have to look to tell you how much, but I wanna say it's probably around ten to twelve thousand, maybe fifteen tops. And then we have a gentleman in IT who handles our help desk tickets and makes sure that our IT personnel are out taking care of things. Um, he's an extra help person, 'cause he only works part-time. So, extra help is either temporary employees or part-time help to cover a need.
Okay, and that leads into kinda where I was going, we've budgeted just a hair over a million dollars. That's a lot of temporary help. Do we have any idea how many we're temporary employees we're talking here?
The bulk of those, the bulk of those are gonna be in parks and recreation classes that are supported by recreation revenues. Because they tend to hire like the Gap summer help. And let me tell you where you can find that in the budget document. Under the community services tab. Lynn always beats me. Page two thirty-two. It's under wages and benefits, but I can tell you for recreation programs, that's all extra help. We should probably move that down one line to make it a little more clear. Recreation is typically always extra help employees for the recreation programs, the, um, summer help at the Gap, for example.
Along those lines on the page previous to thirty-one, you've got aquatics, you've got extra help broken out there, so that shouldn't be included over under rec, because you've got it accounted for under aquatics.
Yeah, I think we were inconsistent, we need to take a look at that.
Okay.
What's that Lynn? Lynn's correcting me in saying aquatics has its own division, so that's why.
And along those same lines, do we have a separate budget for the Gap? That we can, at some point, it's probably, it's not part of this general, but I know in past, we've had a separate profit center for the Gap to see what it was actually, you know, costing us versus the benefit that we give the community. Uh, do you still have that to where that can be produced?
We can definitely produce that, all the expenditures for the Gap are listed here on page two thirty-one.
Uh-huh.
For aquatics, and the revenues are in the revenue section. Yeah, on page ninety-five, swimming pool revenues budgeted for eighteen nineteen are a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Okay, so we're taking in a hundred and sixty-two?
Yes.
And we're spending seven hundred and fifty roughly?
Yeah, part of that is the debt service that we used, bonds that we used to finance the construction of the Gap.
Right, that accounts for about four hundred of it, so we're still, if you take debt service out, uh, Gap is running at a probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand net deficit every year.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the, um, the expenditure status report, and, um, for instance, there are several categories there that, that weren't allocated any funds or budgeted any funds, but they're being expended out of. Um, I'll, I'll point out auto allowance. Was there a reason that we aren't calling that out, so as we go into this, um, budget review in the future? Is that something that's gonna be in there that we can look at, or?
We've always asked departments to charge the appropriate account for anything that they're buying without regard if they go over budget in that particular line item, as long as they don't go over budget for their department as a whole.
Okay.
So for the auto allowance itself, I would have to take a look to see who we're paying auto allowance to. And see the details of that account. This is an aggregation of the entire general fund.
Sure, I understand.
But we can take a look at that.
Yeah. That's, I guess my couldn't, my feeling on that would be, let's just, let's put it out there rather than zero and then have this negative number, unless there's a, a gap principle that says that's okay or something like that.
We probably have the budget dollars under regular salaries, but it's being expended under the auto allowance ca- category, but we can take a look at that, absolutely.
I'm just trying to make sure that when other people look at this thing and ask a question, I have an answer for them.
Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna move on to professional services. So the question was asked and has been asked previously as far as professional services. The city typically uses professional services, um, for departments, um, to get to procure expertise in areas where either, one, the work can't be performed by city staff, two, city staff doesn't have the expertise, or three, it can be completed at a lesser cost through outside services. Um, that said, I asked all the city's departments to provide to finance a summary of all their person, professional services expenditures that exceeded five thousand dollars. The police department, um, submitted everything, uh, over a thousand dollars, and that also is included as a handout in your, uh, operating budget books that you have tonight, so that you can go through and take a look at it on a department-by-department basis and see where departments are spending their money. We tried to include a description of what we're paying for, and I'll just use finance as an example. On our list, we have Brink's Armored Car Service, twelve thousand dollars to take out of the city's cash deposit transfer to the vault, um, at our bank. So there's a variety of different things throughout the city. We've tried to capture all of that and show, um, city council where those funds are being spent, because I certainly can see when you're looking at the general fund, the total that is on this other report that I gave you is two and a half million dollars for just the general fund, so it definitely adds up. So if you have any questions as you're reviewing this, I don't expect you to review it here with you, um, but to take with you and review, and if you have any questions, please reach out to myself, my staff, or, um, the department head for the department that you have a question related to.
Can I just make a quick comment? Thank you so much for taking the time to really, um, describe all the expenses and the purpose of the expenses on this, because, um, I'll just note that I've been asking about the professional development and how those funds are being utilized, so thank you for really getting down to making everything just so clear, and I'll take a nice, good look at this.
Well, you're welcome, and it wasn't just finance, we accumulated it all, but the departments really took the time to go through and analyze their departmental expenditures, 'cause they understand and know who they're contracting with and what they're contracting for far better than we in finance will ever know. So, um, I think everyone did their due diligence to try to provide this information. You had mentioned professional development, this is all the professional services, yes?
Um, thank you, I meant services.
Okay, that's okay. We have a citywide professional development account that's for citywide training as well. Most of the city lives out of that account for any and all travel and training expense for the general fund. Water and wastewater pay for their own, um, police has some now in their budget, because Post was eliminating a lot of the state mandated, uh, Post classes that they would pay for, so we did add money to their budget last year for that. But, um, for the most part, it's a citywide pool travel and training account, and everybody has to submit their request in advance for whatever they're doing training-wise. So please take a look at that and follow up with any questions that you might have, I know it's a lot of information. The other item here as far as discretionary budget options that city council has, I would say service delivery is another topic. Um, Councilman Shaw was asking about the Gap and how much the net cost is to operate it. As we look at reprioritizing, um, I think you need to take a look at what services the city provides, and does council want to see us continuing to provide those services? Or are there other priorities that are more important to the community members and shifting dollars elsewhere? So as you take a look at that, please reach out to myself or anyone on my staff, and we can cost estimate for you, like what the cost for operating the Gap is versus the revenues that come in. 'Cause we do wanna definitely take a look at the net, because if we give up, uh, the expenditure for something, we potentially will lose revenues as well. So it's important, I think, to look at the net cost. And finance has looked at that historically many times over. I think the last time we did a, a deep-dive drill into that was at the beginning of the recession in oh-eight or oh-nine. So, um, we can definitely put that information together for you.
Robin, along those lines, um, and I'll just use the Gap as an example, not looking to take away from what we provide to the, the residents of Yuba City. Um, debt service we can tackle separately, but we need to strive for across the board to at least recover our costs of providing that. And if we take a look at seeing, you know, like the Gap, for example, other communities that provide a similar facility, what do they charge for use of facilities and such, are we on par, are we underneath? These are types of things we gotta look at to, basically, net operations, not debt service, try to break even.
And I would defer to our director, I haven't looked at it, but we can certainly have a conversation with him and find out when the last time he took a look at that. I know it was something a few years back, I believe he did look at.
Alright, thank you.
Another area where I feel city council has, um, discretion relates to the city's material supply and service budget increases the last couple of years. Um, also included in your budget booklet is a summary of all the MSNS requests provided in the last two years. Uh, we look at things as either one-time in nature or ongoing, whenever budget is submitted to finance as part of the next year's budget that's being proposed, and we're in the process of working on. Departments actually break down, it's either one-time in, in nature, and it usually has to do with enhancing customer service or creating some efficiencies, whether it's new software they're purchasing or a project that they're taking on, and it's only one-time money that they need. And once it's in place, they won't incur any costs on a go-forward basis. So we look at using current-year savings to fund those types of things. We try to match ongoing revenues with ongoing expenditures. So it's important for us from a finance perspective to know what is it that they're asking for, is it something that they expect to have reoccurring the following year, or is it one-time? That said, the amounts that were requested last year that were added to the budget that were one-time in nature were two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. You have a summary of what all those requests were that were approved last year. Finance typically goes through and automatically removes those back out of each department's line item budget at the beginning of the budget process of the following year. They told us it was one-time, if it's one-time, they don't need those dollars next year. So that one's kind of an easy give-me for the council to have discretion over redirecting those funds elsewhere. Um, that said, I've also included for you, um, uh, the detailed summary, and I say detailed summary, it's summary, 'cause each request comes through separately to finance with more information. We've recapped it on these sheets to show you why it was requested by the department on an ongoing basis. So we have fiscal year seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen as far as what was added to the budget, and I can tell you, we had a status quo budget for many, many years, where material supplies and services at one point back in the day was reduced to where if you didn't use it, finance was directed to take it away as a budget balancing mechanism during the recession. We held the line on the MSNS budgets for years and years and years. And departments had to figure out how to get by without those funds and either not provide the service or provide a reduced level of service. That said, in recent years, um, departments have had a lot of requests, and some that come to mind that were more expensive that we hadn't done for years during the recession include mulch that was put around on city properties, around trees, et cetera, um, and fertilizer for the parks, for the grass. Those were things that we hadn't done in years that we started doing again. All of this is, um, outlined and included in the budget documents provided to you tonight, so you can take a look at what we've added the past couple of years, and I know departments wouldn't ask for it if they didn't feel like they needed it to provide the services that they provide to the community, but I think it's an area that we need to take a look at if we're looking at reprioritizing funding from one purpose to another. So I've provided you with these lists that you can go through and take a look at. For fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the amount that was added was three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. You have a breakdown of what that was for on the sheets that are included in your budget document. And for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, it was five hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two, which was significant. So I included, I went back two years and provided you everything that was added into MSNS over the two-year period, so you could take a look at it and see as a council if you had other priorities.
Robin, follow-up question for you on this. The policy of use it or lose it, when did that apparently started around oh-eight? And has that policy ceased and it's, and, because it, it inherently causes more problems with the budget long-term than it is, and I, I take it that probably didn't come out of finance, it was probably, came from the council and, but you create an atmosphere of spending frivolously so you don't lose your funding, and you actually punish the departments who probably saved money trying to do the right thing during the recession. So, when has that all, has that completely stopped? And if our departments save any money, they get to retain those funds under our current policy, or is it reallocated still? Are we still in that, you know, use it or lose it mentality?
There's not a use it or lose it mentality, that was a one-time thing that particular year. And we have not done that since, but I will say that we had such bare-bones budgets for so many years that, um, people pretty much expended all that they had in material supplies services just to get the job done. Um, as far as, they have not been penalized with use it or lose it since. What we did do for many years was we cut off purchasing, um, and I'm trying to remember the dates we used. May fifteenth, and then I think we rolled it forward to June first. It drove the departments crazy, 'cause they had to get a memo and get authority from their department head and myself before they could expend any monies after those dates, and it was really hard for them to pre-plan. It caused a lot of work at the staff level to issue purchase orders that were blanket POs, for example, for parts in case they needed something, and then they had to go back and void the POs. We stopped doing that, 'cause it, it seemed like it was an exercise in futility, where departments are entrusted with their budget dollars and it's up to them to spend them wisely. That said, the way that it helps them to have budgetary savings is at the end of the fiscal year, when there's general fund money left over, we typically use that to fund a variety of things, such as, um, and it's included in the city's budget resolution. Turn to that. Lynn can probably find it faster than me, she's on her roll tonight.
Forty-nine and fifty-two.
She's good. Okay, so if you turn to the budget resolution itself for adopting the city's operating budget, it's on pages fifty and fifty-one. It shows there that, um, last year, we allocated three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars specifically to the vehicle replacement fund with excess revenues from the fiscal year seventeen eighteen operations, just to pay for police patrol cars that we had in the budget that we didn't have sufficient funding for. Um, in my notes, I haven't gotten to it yet, but I included a comment about the vehicle replacement plan. When we went to buying Tahos instead of Crown Vics, 'cause we, they don't have Crown Vics anymore, they're a lot more expensive, so the amount that we were setting aside for replacement was insufficient. Um, that said, part of the transfer and the savings at year-end from budgetary savings goes right back to the department in the way of buying vehicles the following year and funding those. In addition, um, we're paying off- In addition, um, we're paying off the loan from development impact fees for police and fire facilities that were constructed. That we brought into a deficit position. And then covering some pension funds and unallocated CIP. That's the manner in which we've been able to fund CIP is through savings from prior years. It's become slim pickings, it really has. I have department heads coming to me and telling me what their needs are. And we just don't have sufficient dollars available to be able to do everything everybody wants to do. And I think you'll hear that on March twelfth.
Without a doubt, I'm sure we will. Um, it, my concern was going back to, you know, the, uh, recession when we were, you know, we basically. Use it or lose it mentality for the one year we took it away. Did that create, and, and I know you don't have the historical data, just off the cuff, gut feeling. Did we take away from any departments in oh eight that were still, you know, suffering the symptoms of today? You know, from, you know, basically eleven years ago. That, uh, departments would have had funds to do some of the things that they should have done, but they were actually, uh, those funds were taken away in oh eight.
Because we took away material supplies and services and not people. I don't think so, I think we've been able to restore that. But that also is an area where we need to take a look at, did we restore too much? I don't think so. I think you'll hear from the departments that they've asked for what they need and they haven't asked for more. Because they know that there's a lot more need than money available.
And you just hit exactly where I was going. I'm not worried if we've over restored a department. But if a department has a need and it's because we've never made them whole, then that's something we need to definitely look at. So if that's something we can just make sure of, that would be much appreciated.
I'm sure that all the department heads will watch this presentation and they'll be free to tell you on March twelfth if that's the case. Um, my gut tells me that no, that's not the case, that people have asked for what they need. And I don't think they've asked excessively, I think there's a lot more need than what we have dollars available, so we've tried to prioritize.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, uh, vehicle replacement fund, I started to get into this already. I explain our vehicle replacement fund to people and say that the vehicle replacement fund owns the city's fleet. It leases them back to the department in exchange for an annual lease charge for using the vehicles. So the theory behind that is when the item is worn out, there will be funds to replace it when it's due for its replacement cycle. We go through and evaluate annually all the vehicles that are looked at for vehicles and equipment, dump, dump trucks, things like that. That are due for replacement, what the mileage is, what the cost of maintenance has been. And how much the replacement cost is going to be, whether it's the same vehicle or a slightly different variation. Because there's, you know, for example, our street sweeper, you've seen the mini street sweeper, it's not the big street sweeper we used to have. So we do look at the use and see if that should be altered as well. But that said, we've evaluated that and looked at it, we've been setting aside eight hundred thousand every year for the city's general fund share. Not water and wastewater, just general fund, eight hundred thousand a year for many, many, many years. And that's not sufficient. Um, based upon the analysis, last year, the amount that we should be setting aside was one million, one hundred and fifty thousand. So we have about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference there of need versus ability to meet. That has not been put into the budget at this point, so I just mentioned that so that you're aware of it. Um, eight hundred thousand was tough to do back during the days of the recession. We held on to vehicles a lot longer, sometimes really long. I know we just replaced this last year, one of my, um, field customer service reps. If I remember off the top of my head, he was driving a nineteen ninety-eight vehicle, so it was pretty high mileage. It wasn't costing us a lot in maintenance, but it was about to, so we replaced it and got a new vehicle this past year. And that, of course, is not true with the police patrol vehicles, because they need to perform. When we need them to perform, we've replaced those on a three-year cycle. So other than that though, the rest of the vehicle, we were, we rely on our fleet maintenance supervisor. He works with Lynn and they go through the feet, the fleet and review it every year to see what we have, when we need to replace it. What we need to replace it with, what the estimated cost is, et cetera. And it's just a math spreadsheet that then tells us how much we should be setting aside versus how much we are. So before we move on to the cost allocation plan, I've got a summary here for follow-up items. And my ask of city council is to review any notes that you might have from tonight and follow up with myself. My team members or the department heads involved with any questions that you might have. Um, also take a look at the salary and benefits cost citywide that was distributed to you in your binders. And, uh, let us know if from your perspective, priorities need to be shifted. Because it would be good to know what you have in mind, so we can put cost analysis together and figure out, okay, if we're adding this over here. The funds have to come from somewhere over here, what does that look like? And I think the timing for all of this is perfect as we head into the strategic planning workshop on March twelfth with city council. And then the other item is to review the seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen material supply and services request. For items that were added to the budget to see if, again, in your perspective, something needs to be shifted elsewhere. And if there's no questions, we'll start on the cost allocation plan document and give you an overview and review of that.
Robin, when, where would you like, um, our feedback by? What would be a good date for you?
I'm gonna say at your convenience, cause this, it's a big deal. We're looking at shifting priorities potentially. So, uh, the sooner you can get to me and tell me what you're thinking, the sooner finance can kinda cost it out and tell you. What it'll cost.
Because we're talking about March twelfth, correct? So you'll need before that?
Um, no, I'm not expecting you to tell us by March twelfth, because that's when you're gonna hear from all the department heads. Regarding what their needs are, what their priorities are, their challenges. And I think you need to hear that before you make any concrete decisions on reallocating dollars. But that's why I asked Diana if I could tack on to our transportation workshop tonight. So I could get all this information in front of you before March twelfth. So you could already be thinking about what you think potentially you might wanna do.
Okay, thanks, that helps.
So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give any time constraints, just call me when you need me.
Thank you.
I'm gonna flip this a little bit and I'm gonna say if there's something that's significant that's coming out of staff. As an upgrade or another need, we probably need to know about that at the, ahead of this meeting as well. Um, I wouldn't wanna be in a position of cutting something that someone feels passionate about necessarily.
Right, correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, but the budget submissions from the departments are due March twentieth?
That's correct.
So we're not going to know prior to the twelfth workshop what, uh, departments are requesting. Although we can ask directors if they're requesting any big ticket items, so let us know in advance.
I think that would be helpful, uh, if it's possible.
Sure.
Real quick, Robin, the, uh, obviously a lot of detail in here. What is we go into negotiations with our employees? What level, what information are we going to be providing them so they can kinda see where we are? And hopefully tailor their asks a little bit more realistically. Not to assume that they're gonna be unrealistic, but, uh, keep them in line with, uh, budget.
Well, I would encourage, um, everyone to watch tonight's presentation. And get a feel for where we're at. And then participate in any budget meetings that we have, because it, they are competing needs. Um, finance has already costed, I know this is probably way premature, but you mentioned it. For one percent of salary for the general fund, if you were to look at across the board, cause we always cost everything across the board. And then we do it by bargaining unit as well. But I can tell you that across the board, a one percent salary increase is two hundred and sixty-three thousand for the general fund.
One percent, okay.
One percent, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And we use that as the benchmark, uh, we have it broken down by bargaining unit. So we're able to take that and multiply it by two, three, whatever the number is. So that we can cost, um, any proposals that come across from the bargaining groups or from the city to the bargaining groups.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm processing as you say that. So the one percent is meaning across the board with all five bargaining units? How many do we have? Four, eight? Thank you, mayor. So the total of that is two hundred and sixty-three for the eight.
Yes, for just the general fund. And then in addition to that, there's an impact to water, wastewater and fleet.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Welcome.
Robin, I would have a follow-up ask, uh, through you to all of our department heads. And that is, they need to give us a heads up on the twelfth of what their true manning needs are. Uh, that way it will help us as we're looking at the budget, starting the twelfth going forward. Because the problem we've had in the past is we've under budgeted for departments that need more bodies. And that's been a problem. So we need to, from public works to parks and recs to public safety. We need to know what the true number of full-time employees is and what that looks like so that we can begin to, to figure this out.
Still processing. Lot of numbers, people, come on.
A lot of information.
I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding, uh, two hundred and sixty-three includes benefits? Salary, uh, retirement, the whole package, but not. The long-term funding for the retirement, the unfunded part of it, the liability?
Correct, for, for every dollar of salary that you give somebody.
Yeah.
It increases our unfunded liability down the road with CalPERS. We have factored that in to the cost based upon what the current cost is. But we know that our chart looks like this for CalPERS, it's on its way up.
Right.
So, um, yeah, two hundred and sixty-three thousand is in today's dollars.
Okay.
Um, based upon what we know our PERS rates are going to be next year. It doesn't factor in the additional cost the following year and the year after that.
Okay, so I, I, it would be great if it was a flat amount and we knew the next year is two hundred and sixty-three. But there's not that chance, obviously, because of the purse or whatever.
It's gonna go up, but there's also.
Insurance.
Yeah, and what happens too is when we see turnover in personnel.
Yeah.
We oftentimes lose classic members that are more expensive, at least for a short period of time. And get pepper employees which are cheaper as far as the PERS rate. And it just comes back the following year in our unfunded liability amount. Once somebody retires and they're no longer, the city's no longer paying a percentage of their payroll for salaries. To CalPERS.
Right.
Then it comes in the big chunk of our unfunded liability that we make the big payment in July for. So it's hard to estimate how much the PERS is gonna be, cause you never know what turnover is going to occur. So to say that it's gonna cost ten percent more for PERS.
Right.
Yes, potentially, but that person might also leave. You might hire somebody at a lower step on the salary scale and a pepper employee that costs you less percentage-wise. So we look at current cost for the current year. And when I say the current year, I'm saying in this case for fiscal year nineteen twenty. So we're projecting ahead what it's gonna cost next year and that was two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Two hundred and sixty-three thousand. So, and, and health benefits is included in that, but still that's more of a, that's more of a predictable kind of rate than compared to the purse.
Yeah, the cost for healthcare won't go up, cause the city contributes what it contributes.
Right.
Unless we were to negotiate something different and that would come to council and close session as part of the cost of a proposal. Whether it's the city proposal or the union proposal.
It might be helpful, just because I'm just very visual, like as I've said, I like pictures, pictures are easier for me to follow. It would be eas, it would be helpful if I knew of this two hundred and sixty-three potentially, which is salary. And you know, whatever that, um.
Benefit.
Benefit, and the benefit separately in the purse. So then I can, I can kinda like gauge a little bit more so to say, there may be a, an influx with this amount, which is. I'm just gonna throw out a number, a hundred thousand. That could be that ten percent plus, you know, that's gonna cost with the unfunded liability. I think if we separated a li, a little bit more, it'll help me be more informed.
We can get that for you.
Thank you.
Robin, one final follow-up, uh, something you said reminded me of a second ask that we need to look at with our departments. And, uh, you mentioned as far as turnover. I know that we've got several departments that turnover has been a serious problem. And we are spending a lot of cost on training of our city staff. Can we have the department heads give us a cost basis of what it's costing for training? And what would look like if we were actually able to have some long-term retention? And how much savings that might be to their individual departments? Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, I'm sure you meant this, but you mean by how much we're spending on training new employees?
Exactly, not ongoing, new employees to get them qualified for the job and then we lose them in a very short period of time. Cause that's a cost of doing business.
I know for the police department, it's huge for fire as well, cause they put their new recruits through the academy and bring them on. There's a lot of training that goes into that, so we'll try to estimate the cost of that.
Good. Thank you. Alright, we're ready.
Okay, next, cost allocation plan.
Does anybody else need a break? No. What? You do? It's occupied right now. How much long, how much is this, how long will this take, do you think?
Same number of slides as Robin had, but it depends on your questions.
Alright, let's take, let's take, let's take five then, if you don't mind, alright? Alright ma'am, welcome.
Before Lynn starts.
Yes.
Discussing the cost allocation plan and while everyone's taking their seats. Um, I was talking to Chief Landon during the break and he corrected me and said that we did expand. And we, uh, keep our police patrol vehicles now for four to five years. So typically four years, not three. So it was three, but we're making even them last longer now, so since I misspoke, I wanted to correct that.
Alright, got it, six years, got it.
So mayor, one thing.
Oh, he's not here, no.
I would like to say thank you to the finance team for providing jelly beans from the bean counters. I think that was showing their sense of humor and, uh, it's really fun.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause this is the time you're gonna need some more sugar. Okay, good evening, mayor and members of the council. This evening, I present to you an overview of the city's cost allocation plan, commonly referred to as the CAP. Yuba City uses a consultant to annually update both our citywide cost allocation plan and our public works cost allocation plan. This consultant has expertise in this area and is able to efficiently ensure that the city's cost allocation charges. Are supported with detailed analysis, meet all required accounting standards. And are prepared with a reasonable and accurate methodology that relates directly back to the level and, and amount of services. Provided to the department receiving the cost allocation. I would like to begin by giving you a brief overview of the lit, document layout. Followed by a more in-depth discussion of its contents. And finally, an example of how the CAP charges are developed and then allocated. Yes. This slide gives us an example of the types of departments that are considered to be either a supporting program or an operating program. Supporting programs or departments serve operating programs or departments. Departments listed on the left are supporting programs such as HR and finance. The list on the right identifies operating programs, which include both the water and the wastewater funds. Also known as enterprise funds, which receive the service support departments provide. Using that larger cost allocation binder, please refer to pages one through four. This is the table of contents. The allocating departments are listed on the left of the page. And the allocation basis units you see in the middle of the page is also referred to as the department functions. We will discuss. We will discuss these functions in more detail later. Pages five through thirteen are the summary pages. These are the final citywide cost allocation charges that flow from the individual service department tabs located throughout the rest of the document. The summary page charges were used in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget, our current year. Note that we don't actually charge other general fund departments such as police for services used, only non-general fund programs with a funding source. Each service department section contain the same basic structure. However, the functions or the allocating basis vary based on the department's specific responsibilities and services provided to the user departments. These are the key components to developing the user charges from the service departments to the receiving department. We will go through the finance budget unit as an example so you can see how the document information flows. So, you'll have a, a tab that's just strictly for the finance section. The Personnel Service Analysis, which uses the total annual salary for each position authorized in the budget, as shown on pages seventy-eight through eighty-three for the bi, finance budget unit. The fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget, including both salary and benefits, and the material supplies and services, as shown on page eighty-four through eighty-seven in the finance budget unit. The fiscal year sixteen seventeen actual data is based on performance measures for work or services delivered to the receiving department in the prior year. This information ranges from the actual number of help desk tickets initiated in IT to the cost with processing accounts payable on, uh, based on the number of AP checks per division. Specific allocating methods are identified in the narrative of each service department section. Please refer to page seventy-five in the finance section as an example. Before reviewing details of Yuba City's CAP, I'm going to just, uh, back up for just a bit and provide you more in the way of an overview of what a CAP is. Then we will drill down to Yuba City specifically. A cost allocation plan is a document that identifies, accumulates, and distributes allowable direct and indirect costs, and identifies the allocation you, methods used for distributing those costs. Direct costs are expenditures that can easily connect to a specific cost object, whether it be a project, a task, or a department. For example, the chemicals that are used at the water treatment plant are considered a direct cost. Costs which cannot be accurately attributed to a specific cost object are called indirect costs. These typically benefit multiple cost objects, and it is impractical to accurately trace them to an individual product, service, or activity, or department. For example, Finance purchases check stock in bulk. At the time we purchase those checks, we do not know the exact amount each division is going to use. So, this therefore would be considered an indirect cost. A cost allocation plan can be used for several purposes. It is an accounting report that calculates and spreads agency-wide indirect costs to departments and funds that receive a service from other departments. It can provide reimbursement to the general fund for support services, and can also be a tool during the budgeting process to understand the true or full cost of providing services. For Yuba City, this process begins in the late fall, gathering actual information from the service departments based on their functions identified in the previous year's plan. In January, along with our consultant from MGT, Finance sets up meetings with the department heads and managers, and we discuss the functions and/or if they need to make changes to be applied to the CAP following year. Once all of the information has been received and forwarded to our consultant, the cost allocation plan is developed, reviewed by city staff, and with a goal to be finalized by the end of March. The CAP-generated charges to the various entities that use support services are then incorporated into the operating budget for the following fiscal year. There are two types of cost allocation plan methodologies available. The full cost plan and the two CFR Part two hundred plan. Both plans have similar attributes and both adhere to generally accepted accounting practices. But they also have several differences. The two CFR Part two hundred plan must reconcile to actual expenditures, but the full cost plan may be used on budget estimates. The two CFR Part two hundred plan produces a conservative view of citywide indirect costs, while the full cost plan produces a comprehensive picture of the full cost of providing citywide indirect services. The two CFR Part two hundred plan must be used for external allocations like grants, while the full cost plan is for internal use only. Because of its flexibility, the city of Yuba City uses the full cost plan. This allows the city to include general government functions not allowed in the two CFR Part two hundred plan, such as council and treasurer functions. In addition, the allocation basis ratios that are used to allocate costs to each department is based on actual data from the previous year. Therefore, there is no requirement to do a true-up. Hey, let's, now let's specifically take a look at Yuba City's citywide CAP and follow a specific example through. This is, uh, this slide is an example from page five of the one portion of the summary page. The departments listed in purple on the left and rows are the allocating departments, and the divisions listed in blue in the columns are the receiving divisions. This summarizes the amounts that are brought forward from the allocation summaries located at the end of each service department section. Okay, this is an example from page seventy-five of some of the functions that are identified in the finance section of the CAP for determining allocated costs. Please note the second function, payroll. I will be using this function in example later on. Each service department completes a Personnel Service Analysis based on annual, um, I'm sorry, based on annual salary of each position that was approved in the current year's budget. The position allocation example provided here is from page seventy-eight of the CAP in the finance section. Each position is allocated by percentage of time to the function identified for that employee's specific job duties. Each employee's functions add up to one hundred percent across all services provided. These allocations, when added together for each position, creates a percentage for each function or service provided as seen on page seventy-nine.
I think I might have a question.
Sure.
Um, so, the accounting manager, 'cause that's what you have highlighted on page seventy-eight. Um, but it's, but it's not on your, on your slide, on the cost plan slide, the previous one? Is it on there?
No, no. This was, that was just a small portion of that PSA, but I'm, I highlighted that for you because it's going to be part of an example.
Another example?
Yes, and I wanted to highlight all of the figures that I'm gonna be walking through for ease, is, so you can easily identify what I'm talking about, 'cause there's so many.
So, then account, it is on page seventy-eight, though, the accountant one, which is on the slide that you have there listed, right? The sixty-two thousand?
Yeah.
So, each of these are, um, account codes, I'm trying to understand it.
It's okay.
Um, account codes that are percentages of, of the work that that person may be doing?
Right, so the departments look at that specific, um, employee's job duties, and they allocate the time based on their responsibilities of what they're working on.
So, that's how you then, I, I know this as a time analysis. So, is that similar then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Bingo, that makes sense in my head now. Okay, so, in that, then it's connected to the other operating budget, to the expense where that was originally funded, where the funds, it, it ki, it kinda, help me out here, Robin.
In the sense that, um, looking at, we only actually charge things through that are non-general fund. As Lynn mentioned previously, we don't charge police or fire, for example.
Okay.
But for, uh, the example she's going to use is our payroll person. They spend eighty percent of their time roughly doing payroll. They do payroll for water and wastewater as well. So, that's the example she's gonna walk you through. And when you look at the, um, personal service allocation, the person that does payroll is a senior account clerk on page seventy-eight. And when you go across, you look at eighty percent of their time is under payroll.
Got it. It just made completely, just like, you know, how that all falls into place.
The example through.
It'll make even more clear. Okay. Thank you. It's, it's coming together.
Okay. As shown on page eighty-four, the percentage derived from the PSA is then applied to the current year's salary and benefits budget and the MSNS cost that are either a direct expense of the function or an overhead cost applicable to all functions. These applied percentages will create a dollar cost value to each function of the budget. That dollar cost value is then allocated to each operating program based on actual data from the prior fiscal year. I will walk through an example of this later. But first, um, I would like to talk about the MSNS portion of this slide in a little more detail. As I mentioned, uh, the MSNS, MSNS or supplies and services costs can be either a direct expense of the function or an overhead cost applicable to all functions. I, I, um, I'm referring to page eighty-four. Okay, um, that scenario is shown in the slide in the first three supplies and services amounts directly allocated to the utility billing function. An example of a direct cost from the finance budget would be lockbox services. The city contracts with a company called Check Processors, Inc., for our lockbox services. They process all of our utility payments paid by check from our customers. That service is therefore considered a direct expense of the utility billing function.
I have a question. Is that the online service? Or is that a different?
No, no, this is when, like, you, uh, you get a utility bill, and you have that green envelope inside, and you send in a check, it goes straight to the lockbox, the check processor.
Okay, so which one is the online service? Is it in this one? Because it would, it...
But it's not a sep, separate.
It wouldn't be a separate, it's all?
It could be in the postage or the other part of it, um...
Just curious, not, not, not necessary to go through, yeah.
Utility supplies and services, that third line, it'll be included in that.
And it's also listed, uh, the cost in the professional services breakdown that we gave city council tonight for finance.
Okay, each allocating department has its own section in the CAP with the same basic structure. Once the allocations have been determined, those amounts are spread through the rest of the CAP in the form of incoming costs to other allocating departments. For example, HR performs such, um, functions for finance such as recruitment or labor management contracts. Therefore, their allocation charges flow through the plan to the finance section in the form of incoming costs. This example can be found on page eighty-nine of the CAP. Hey, this is where I'm gonna give you a specific example of, of tracing those figures all the way through. I would like to walk you through an example of how the cost plan develops the allocations to the user departments. Please turn to page seventy-eight of the CAP, the Personnel Services Analysis. The accounting manager with a total annual salary of ninety-four thousand six hundred and seven is allocated seven percent to the payroll function. The account clerk senior with a total annual salary of fifty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-eight is allocated eighty percent to the payroll function. To develop the total relative percentage for the payroll function, their individual salaries are multiplied by their allocated percentage. That result is then divided by the total annual salaries of the finance division of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-seven for a payroll function percentage of five point seven nine percent, as shown on page seventy-nine. Please turn to page eighty-four. In order to develop the total, I'm sorry, in order to develop the dollar cost value to allocate to the user departments, the payroll function percentage from the previous slide of five point seven nine percent is then applied to the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget for both salary and benefits and the material supplies and services. This equates to a dollar cost of value of ninety-six thousand four hundred and six dollars. Please turn to page eighty-nine. The total incoming costs from other allocating departments of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine are then added to pay, uh, to Finance's payroll function value of ninety-six four oh six for a total dollar cost of value for the payroll function of a hundred and eight thousand one hundred and forty-six. Hey, so, based on that example, how do we allocate that hundred and eight thousand one hundred and forty-six? Finance is able to run a report from our Cognos report writer that tells us exactly how many payroll checks we wrote for each division in the city during fiscal year sixteen seventeen. Using that report, we can see that out of ten thousand one hundred and eighty-eight payroll checks written that year, four hundred and eighty-two of those were directly to the wastewater treatment plant division. In other words, four point seven three percent of the checks, as seen on page ninety-seven. Therefore, four point seven three percent of the hundred and eight thousand one hundred and forty-six payroll allocation will get charged to the wastewater fund for a total of five thousand one hundred and forty-seven, as shown on page ninety-six. Now, please turn to page one twenty-five. This, this shows the charge will then be combined with all other functions costs from Finance summarized on pages one twenty-four through one thirty-one. The total for the wastewater treatment division is located on page one thirty-one in the amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand... of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand twenty-four dollars. This total will then flow to the citywide summary schedule located on page ten. That concludes the presentation of the City's cost allocation plan as part of our Budget 101 presentation. Are there any questions on this or any other financial matters?
We agree with you.
Just another day at the office, so, kind of following this through and, and everything, it's, yeah, there's two different methods you can do. I was the one that raised the issue about the true-up, because how do we truly know, you know, that this is the true allocation? Basically, what we have is we have a loophole because both are accepted, and I'm more of a truist, and I really want to know what the time is being spent, because we are allocating other things over to other departments that I personally don't feel like the time is there. Okay? One noted is our city manager's compensation from our prior city manager's been allocated across the board, but we have someone that runs that division as the manager. It was a conversation that we've had previous, okay? So when I'm looking at this, the wastewater treatment that you've got at the four ninety-nine, rolling all of this back up, is that the summary of all the cost allocation rolling over to the Public Works for waste, for wastewater, the four ninety-nine?
Actually, the waste, that number I gave you is for the wastewater treatment. What rolls into the Public Works cap is for the water distribution and sewer collection.
Right, this is, this is part of the money that's being charged to wastewater?
Yes.
Okay, so if I look at, what else is being charged to Public Works under wastewater? Because I've got four ninety-nine here, is this, is this all of it?
And while Lynn's looking for the next comment to answer your question, I'll refer you to the columns, so you're looking at water treatment for four hundred, excuse me, wastewater treatment for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand twenty-four dollars. It shows you what they're paying for, two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars for contract management, nine hundred and seventy-seven for bidding, et cetera, all the way across back on the previous pages as well.
Okay, so, and that's, that's what I'm saying, so, but is this, all this being, for like, interdepartment transfers being billed across for auxiliary services is the four ninety-nine? Because you've also got wastewater collection above it for ninety, pretreatment for fifty-two. I'm really trying to get a handle on here of what that total cost is.
Right.
That we're allocating under the full cost method, which isn't the true-up that I like to see, because I want to know that we have it. So can you tell me what rolls into wastewater off of this?
Absolutely, so I'd like to refer you to page ten.
Almost there, one more page. Okay?
Okay, so under the column, it says Fund Five Eighteen, which is the wastewater treatment plant. All those, on the left-hand side, the allocating departments, their methodologies or their functions that create the dollar cost value and are allocated based on the actual sixteen seventeen data is presented in that column for each, each department. So for the total of the wastewater treatment plant, their total allocation was one million one hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-one, and seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, sorry, for all service departments.
Okay, so that's going to lead into my next question, which you probably don't have the answer tonight, but I'd like the answer by the twelfth. When we had our workshop on water and wastewater, we're transferring one point nine million from Public Works to the General Fund, and you're telling me that's actually only one point one. That was not for other costs, that was listed on the report as this exact, this was for auxiliary services. I have an eight hundred thousand dollar discrepancy.
While Lynn's turning to something else in the, the Public Works cap, it's the one million one seventy-six seven ninety-one for Division eighty-one twenty, but then you also have to look at Division eighty-one ten, eighty-one thirty, and eighty-one forty. So you would have to add up all four of those numbers to get the citywide cost allocation charge that's flowing through to wastewater.
Even at that, we're maybe one point five, and we're transferring one point nine. That's still a four hundred thousand dollar.
Then, then you need to go to the Public Works cap, and that's the allocations that the Public Works Department, summary allocations are. So you, if you went to your smaller binder and went to the summary pages there, that will show the citywide cost allocation charge flowing through to the Public Works cap. So along with their allocations, I'm sorry, page three.
Okay.
You would take the seventy-one ten total, the eighty-one ten, well, I'm sorry, if you want to stick with just wastewater.
That's the six thirty-five.
The eighty-one ten, and then add the citywide to that.
And that's where the one point nine that you're mentioning comes from, directly from the total of those five columns.
Right.
Okay, for the rest of my colleagues here at the table, when we hit the twelfth, I would like the two million coming out of water and the one point nine coming out of wastewater, clearly broken down, so we're not having to go from one to the other, and I'd like to know what allocations are coming from what staff, because again, I want to zero back in on executive staff's salaries that are being paid for out of the Public Works. And my comment very simply was, our Public Works Director, actually, that was, that's her role, she runs those plants, our city manager does not, so why are we covering other salaries out of Public Works? And that troubles me. So can we have that clearly broken down, what salaries are being covered coming out of that, two million out of water and one point nine out of wastewater?
Yes, we can, we can get that for you. More questions?
I think I found the answer.
Must be my highlighted amounts, huh?
It was helped, yeah. So any, any position that's within the city that is, is receiving cost allocation by actual job function is listed in this?
That's correct.
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, lots of information to digest, I'm sure you will have questions. Just remember, you asked for this. Thank you very much for your time, and.
Thank you. Robin and your staff, thank you very much.
Thank you for, this was great, thank you.